Good evening. I would like to call to order the Tuesday, September 27, 2022 School Board and Receiver General Business Meeting. And at this time, I would ask Mr. Turman to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the United States of America, to the Constitution, to our Constitution, to our Constitution.
I would like to announce that the School Board and Receiver met in executive session prior to the School Board meeting at 5:00 PM to discuss legal and personnel matters. At this time, Adam Secretary, if you could please call the board. Thank you, Dr. Suski. Mr. Parker?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Copeland?
Present.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Radcliffe? Ms. Robinson? Mr. Roy?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Thompson Leader?
Present.
Dr. Suski?
Present.
Dr. Waters?
Present.
Thank you. You did mark Ms. Robinson's, yes, thank you. Thank you. At this time, I am requesting approval of the minutes from September 13, 2022 as presented. The minutes from the September 27, or the September 13, excuse me, committee of the whole meeting are approved as presented on the agenda. Thank you, Dr. Suski. I am requesting approval of the agenda for Tuesday, September 27, 2022 as presented. The agenda is approved as written. Thank you, Dr. Suski. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Turman for recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Suski. We have two recognitions this evening. One is a community mural, a mosaic that was introduced at the John Harris campus, so the Capital Area and Aminian Unit Arts and Education Program in partnership with the City of Harrisburg Arts Fest. The City of Harrisburg and Harrisburg School District partnered to bring a community mosaic mural to the Harrisburg High School. On John Harris Campus during this year's Arts Fest, community members were able to create a unique colored glass tile to be incorporated into the mosaic. Local artist Linda Valette used her artistry to create a mosaic, mosaic panels impacting unity and the community through art. If you ever get a chance to see it, it is a very unique and a very beautiful piece of artwork that is now on the John Harris Campus. And the last thing that we have this evening is a very big congratulations to the Harrisburg School District graduates, Marshall Math Science Academy student Amira Foster, who was the first place winner of the 2022 Dolphin County Cultural Celebration Essay Contest. So congratulations to Ms. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Turman. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Kirsten Keys, our Public Relations Coordinator, who will introduce our presenters for this evening.
Good evening, everyone, to Mr. Turman, to our quarter winner receiver, Dr. Suski, and our recovery officer, Dr. Waters, and to the entire board and our administration and staff. It is a pleasure and an honor to share with you this evening and to introduce some esteemed and very special guests. I'd like to introduce at this time, and ladies, you can please stand up, prepare to come forward, Mrs. Tracy Jennings. She is the president and founder of an organization called FLO, which stands for For the Love of Women. And she is a graduate of Harrisburg High School, the William Penn Campus, where she studied business administration. So this is one of our own. In addition to Mrs. Jennings, I'd like to introduce to some and present to others, Dr. Sharie Livingston. She is the obstetrics and gynecology chair for UPMC Health System, and she covers multiple campuses throughout the central Pennsylvania region. She too got her start here in the Harrisburg School District as a student at Downey Elementary School. So without any further ado, please help me welcome Dr. Sharie Livingston and Mrs. Tracy Jennings.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us today. Before Dr. Livingston gets into the slides, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about FLO, For the Love of Women. We launched this year in May, and since then, we were able to, we collected hundreds of free products, and we were able to distribute those products to the Shalom House, Women's Shelter, Bedethamistin Women's Shelter, and Spearsport Arena Domestic Violence Safe House. So we're looking forward to making a large donation to the McKinney Vento Program next month during the hunger and homelessness month. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Sharie Livingston. I was actually born and raised here in Harrisburg. I attended Bishop McDevitt High School and just recently gave the keynote address there. So I just, I feel like I'm back at home. Yeah, I like to hold these microphones, right? I feel like I'm back at home. I grew up in the projects on Cameron Street, and then my family moved to Bailey Street. So we used to play on the playgrounds around here. So if I sort of act like I'm at home, just let me be, right? All right, we can advance the slide. So before we move on, it's important to kind of tell you who we are and why we're here, right? FLO stands for For the Love of Women, and the mission of FLO is to eliminate period poverty and to address menstrual inequity. And we all know what inequity is, right? Inequity is an unjust disparity in health. So for example, inequality is a 68-year-old man is going to fare differently from a cardiac standpoint than an 18-year-old man, right? That's an inequality. You can't do anything about that. And inequity is a difference in health that is unjust because it's preventable. A perfect example is diabetes, right? Everybody thinks diabetes is hereditary. It's not. It's a conglomeration of lifestyle, lack of access to affordable healthcare. Well, menstrual inequality follows the same pathway, right? Menstrual inequity. There are 700 million menstruators in the world. That means 500 million because roughly one in six will suffer period poverty. They can't afford menstrual products. They suffer risk of infection because of lack of access to affordable menstrual products. So you may say to Tracy and myself, because our mission is to eliminate period poverty by providing free menstrual hygiene products, you may say, why are you here? Why are you talking about diabetes? Why aren't you talking about gun violence? Why aren't you talking about all the other things that plague our society? I'll tell you why. As an OB-GYN physician here, and I practice in Lancaster, but I see many patients from this area, it starts early. When we talk about period poverty, in as much as fifth or sixth grade, girls learn, unfortunately, to feel dispossessed, right? To feel like there's some issue with their body. And that materializes into how they feel about themselves overall. So if somebody were to say to us at FLO, well, why are we talking about periods? It's because we need to understand that we need to advocate for young people, educate young people, and do what FLO is doing, which is serve young people. So without, I don't think we bore you with the slides because I know that there are other presentations, but our goal is to receive donations. So we, right now, we've been meeting at Hamilton Health Center. They think gracious to us and allow us to have our donation events onsite. And we use social media as our platform to disseminate the information about our events. And we have so far collected over 10,000 menstrual hygiene products. We will then take the donated items and distribute them through three pathways: schools, religious organizations, and homeless shelters. Why? Because the need is greatest in those three pipelines. So we ask you to support us, and there are so many ways to support us. I would be remiss, I have a nonprofit organization called Patients Are Waiting, I would be remiss to say that asking for funds is embarrassing. No, it's not. The reality is, guess what? This building wouldn't be here, these lights wouldn't be on if you didn't have money. So the reality is, we need funds. We need any type of support that you can give us, boots on the ground. Anytime we have our events, please feel free to support us. And just use your voice, elevate the lives of young people, young girls, young people, however they're identifying themselves, and just support our mission. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Livingston and Mrs. Jennings. You'll be hearing more about an upcoming event in partnership with Student Services and our McKinney Vento Program for National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And we're hoping that all of our media friends who are in the room and those who are not will come out to support us and cover that awesome donation that's going to take place for women and girls. Next up, I'd like to introduce the team from Effective School Solutions. They're going to be presenting a report card for 2021 and 2022. Presenting to us this evening is Ms. Patsy Grove, Ms. Lane Whitaker, and Mr. Joe Sampson. Let's welcome Effective School Solutions.
Thank you so much for that introduction and just a little change in presenters. Lane Whitaker was unable to be with us tonight. So we have Ms. Colleen Patterson, who is joining us. Colleen is the program director for professional development, project director for professional development within the district. We also have Joe Sampson, who is the regional director who works with our clinical team within the district as well. My name is Patsy Grove. I'm the regional vice president of programming for Effective School Solutions, and we are excited to be partnering with the Harrisburg School District. I wanted to say a big thank you to Dr. Suski, Dr. Waters, Mr. Turman, Dr. Craig, and ladies and gentlemen of the board for allowing us to be here tonight and present on some of the outcomes that we've had within our first half of the year, providing services to the Harrisburg School District. So the first thing I want to talk about is just a little bit of a summary of our programming, the results that we've had within the first half of the year. We started with the district in January and really started providing clinical services in February. Utilization of our clinical therapy services has been extremely high in that short period of time to the end of the year, end of the school year. We have had over 1,200 total therapeutic interactions with the students within your district in that short period of time. We collect data on various things with the students with which we serve. In that, part of what we're going to talk about today is that, on average, 67% of the students in our programming have maintained or increased in their grades. 85% of the students that we serve have maintained or decreased in their discipline. And on average, 66% of the students that we have served have either maintained or improved their attendance. Those are some significant numbers to happen within the first six months of our programming, and we're excited about the work that we can do and the collaboration that we have within the district. We feel that we have a very strong quality partnership with the district, not just with district leadership on that level, but also within each of the schools. I think we can say that we have appreciated so much the work that we have and the collaboration we have with the school leadership and school staff. They really have been instrumental in helping our program be successful. I want to talk a little bit about just the mental health crisis that is facing our youth, the young people, and not just Harrisburg, but throughout the country. Mental health sometimes is not really talked about openly, and a lot of the work that we're doing is working to help our young people really deal with mental health and behavioral issues, even when it's not the thing that they want to talk about. So we help them deal with these things in other ways as well. One in five students struggle with a mental health disorder. Again, that is not just Harrisburg. This is nationwide data that we've been collecting, especially since the COVID pandemic has started. There has been just a tremendous increase, actually, in the amount of students who have experienced anxiety and depressive symptoms amongst our children, the children that we work with, the children that we work to serve. I think it's pretty significant. Some of the data that we've gathered nationwide regarding the impact that COVID has had on our world includes that the emergency department visits for mental health reasons have increased significantly. They've increased 24% for 5- to 11-year-olds, and they've increased over 30% for 12- to 17-year-old students. Again, significant numbers that mean our young people need help, they need support, and that's the work hopefully that we're able to do and help provide to the students within this district. There's challenges with students returning to programming schooling since COVID. I know that last year was a return to schooling after having time spent schooling, providing schooling and receiving schooling remotely. There has been a real struggle for students as they return into the school setting to be able to manage just interactions with other students, with their peers, interacting with adults in leadership roles, just in general. That integration back into the school setting has been difficult. I also wanted to talk about that, and I wore my glasses today, and obviously, they still are awful because I can't see the small numbers that we have written on there. So give me one second. So 37% of our high school students throughout the nation have reported that they've experienced poor mental health during COVID. That doesn't seem like a lot. 37% actually is a significant number of students that are reporting that because many students don't report or they under-report. So our goal with ESS is to partner with the district to help provide supports to your students that may be struggling with mental health and behavioral issues, and we're thankful to have this opportunity with you. I want to talk a little bit about Effective School Solutions and just how we operate. We look at a multi-tiered systems of, a systems of support approach for the work that we do with students and with the district in general. We provide multi-layers of support within this district. We provide what is called tier programming. We have tier three programming in the majority of your schools, which I'm going to talk about in just a moment. This tier three programming has focused a lot on students that have significant mental health or behavioral issues, that tend to struggle with managing those things, and they have a hard time regulating their emotional, their emotional needs. That is very intensive programming that we do with these students where there is what we call wraparound services, where they're receiving multiple touchpoints, therapeutic touchpoints per week, to help them remain successful and remain in the classroom. We also have started providing this school year tier two services in two of your schools for those students that have mild to moderate issues, where they might be struggling with some social, emotional, or family issues, and it might be impacting their schooling. But we provide services that are less intense, but still provide a level of support to those students when they struggle. Colleen is going to talk about our tier one services, which is professional development, which we are providing to many of the staff within the district, and she'll give more information about that in just a few moments. And then we also provide foundational support and consultation. And we have someone who is unable to be with us today, Ms. Kalyani Shaw, who works with Effective School Solutions and helped the district to work on creating what we call an MTSS playbook, which really helps to standardize and normalize procedures in terms of how staff within the district are responding to needs within the students. This illustrates just the footprint of our services within the district. So here you can see some of the schools that we are currently in. I mentioned that that tier two, we started that this year. So we're at SciTech High School and Cougar Academy. All of the other schools are receiving tier three services currently. Tier one services, again, that is being provided throughout the district at John Harris High, Roland Academy, Marshall Math Science Academy, and Camp Hurton. And then the foundational support of the MTSS playbook is a collaboration that we do with various leaders within the district as well as throughout the district of other staff. I always find it's important to show you who is providing services, who is working to serve the students within your district. So this is just a snapshot of some of our providers, the people that are providing the direct clinical work, as well as our team of staff that are providing the PD, our MTSS playbook as well. It also has their, the schools with which they serve. We're going to take a little bit of time to talk about three different areas. Our clinical support is going to talk about how we support the Harrisburg students. And we want it to be very clear, clinically, we are providing support to students, but we also offer the professional development, which is here to support our Harrisburg educators. And then finally, our MTSS playbook is a district-wide way that we're offering support to the staff here at the district. I'd like to take this opportunity to turn it over to Joe Sampson, who is a regional director with Effective School Solutions, and he's going to talk about some of our clinical data in this past first half of the year.
Thank you. Protocol has been established, so good evening. In our clinical portfolio, we work with students across the district. Our report card is focused on four schools, the schools that we started. What you can see is our census, so for our tier three program, each clinician has a census of 10 students, and those are 10 of the most intense students in a particular building. Here you see where our services are being assigned. So I'm struggling with a similar issue with my eyesight, but what you can see is where the services are. We have PR sessions, we have individual sessions. So they are taking up the bulk of our time, our clinicians are engaging with our students to provide those services. We also provide group therapy, we provide family therapy, we provide family engagement workshops, and we facilitate conflict resolutions and other clinical interventions. This is a depiction of our clinical engagement across the district. So for us at ESS, our benchmark for engaging tier three students is up to, is three engagements per week. And what you can see here is that we have an engagement of, an average of four engagements per week across the district for those four months with the students who were involved in our ESS and that were receiving ESS services. Part of what we do is report data geeks, right? We want to know and we want to ensure that our program is working. So what we do is we capture that, and some ways in which we do that is we have our students who are in our program self-report. So we have to self-report on how their overall wellness is on a weekly basis. Then we have our clinicians look at the therapeutic goals that were set aside for those particular students and match that up. Then we measure their goals with the overall wellness to see how those data points correlate. This is a representation of that, where we have our students across the district for those months' weekly report. They have 92% report of overall feeling well, their wellness report. We have our clinicians reporting, I believe, the 96%. 97% that students were feeling well, or they were having a positive impact on, the program was having a positive impact on the students. Student academic progress indicators. So what we do is at ESS is when we start, when we meet a student, we assess that student. We want to see where that student is, so we have a baseline data. And then we review that student every marking period to ensure that there's a level of improvement or to see if there is no improvement, so that we can provide the proper interventions to address those particular needs. So we look at three factors when we look at student academic progress. We look at the GPA, we look at attendance, and we look at, oh, excuse me, one second. You look at the total distance. So what you can see is with our, in each area, there's been an improvement in GPA, there's been an improvement or a decrease in disciplinary actions, and there's also been, they're either been stable or they've had an increase in attendance. This shows that we saw a decrease in chronic absenteeism. When we say chronic absenteeism, we look at students who have had five or more absences per marking period. And what our data shows is that there's been a 25% decrease in chronic absenteeism. So what students are saying? So students, they're in ESS, and they give us their feedback. We want their feedback, excuse me. Our students, we want their feedback. We also want feedback from parents. What students are saying, it's been helpful because it gives me a break from stressful experiences I have in class. ESS is fun, it helps me with my anger. Mr. Brad, Mr. Brad wanted to shout out here. Mr. Brad is a good guy. Anytime I get frustrated, I'm able to come to ESS, and Mr. Brad helps me to calm down. Mr. Brad keeps my info private, and we're able to play games together. I feel that Mr. Brad is doing a good job. It is very helpful, and I want to continue if I'm still at Roland next year. You've helped me so much and addressed all of my concerns. So that's what students are saying. What's working in our areas of focus? What's working is there's a great deal of collaboration between schools, our school staff and ESS staff. And we genuinely appreciate that because in order for us to be effective, we have to have collaboration. And we see that, we see the dedication from the teachers, from the administrators. So we're extremely impressed and appreciative of that. Increased student engagement as a school year progresses, and our data shows that. Improvement in grades, attendance, and discipline, as well as students reporting improved mental health and overall wellness. Areas of focus, increased family engagement initiatives in contracted schools across the district. The presenters before talked about growing up in Harrisburg, right? If you grew up in Harrisburg, you knew Harrisburg loves Harrisburg folk, right? But when you come to Harrisburg, it takes some time. You go, you have to show up, you have to present, you have to be consistent, and then they will run to you. So this is new for us. Our programs have just been in the school, but we've seen, already seen an increase in family engagement, and we're going to push to continue to have that family engagement. Focus on building and maintaining maximum census capacity throughout the district. We want to have your students come to ESS. We want to provide the services to them because we see the need. And when we provide the services, they excel. So we want to make sure that we have a full census. We want to focus on strong program implementation in new and existing schools, including focus on high-level communication with school districts and leadership. We're not working in a vacuum, and we're not working in secret. We want you to know what we're doing, and we want to show you what we're doing so that if there are any questions or concerns, you can bring it to our attention, and we'll work collaboratively to ensure that your students are receiving the best services that they can. I'm going to turn it over to Colleen.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to take just a few brief minutes to talk about the professional development arm of ESS and the work that we're doing here in the district. I'll say it's been such a pleasure to get to work. I get to work with the teachers, and it's been really wonderful to get to meet all of them and work with them. and it's been really wonderful to get to meet all of them and work with them. And so, you know, I've already been through the district this year, but this, we're just going to talk about last year, which we only had three short months, and yet we still got to see, you know, quite a bit of progress. So what is it that I get to do? The first thing, the objectives that we have are training in our Trauma Attuned Method as well as the Nurture and Heart Approach. So the Trauma Attuned Method is pretty self-explanatory, talking about, you know, helping teachers explain what is trauma, how behavior, trauma can show up as behaviors and things like that. The Nurture and Heart Approach is all about relationship, and it's all about kind of how do we, now that we understand the effects of trauma, how do we move forward? How do we build those relationships and support the students? And also, this is in connection with, you know, the Tier Three that the clinical team is doing, so we're helping to build that within the classrooms of just building those relationships and supporting students further. And then what I love about this is that in addition, so once we've given them those trainings, we, the teachers, six teachers per school, receive coaching, one-on-one coaching with yours truly, that they're so lucky. But, so they get to have coaching once a month with me, which coaching is an observation where I sit in on a class, and then we get to debrief for about 15, 20 minutes afterwards. And what we're doing is figuring out how do we implement what is learned in these trainings and these professional development trainings that they get? How do we authentically and realistically implement them within their classroom? So it's really great because, you know, teachers get a lot of professional development, and I'm sure they leave a lot of them feeling inspired, but then they get back to the classroom and feel overwhelmed about how to implement, so that is where the coaching comes in. And then with that, we do a little bit of data collection to, you know, that I'll be presenting at the end of this year to show the progress that's being made. And then we also have lots of different opportunities for additional professional development, such as topics like de-escalation, the language of behaviors, and things like that. So we have three basic work streams, as I talked about. The work stream one is the professional learning workshops. Work stream two is the individual and group coaching, and then work stream three is consultation. So last year, and now this year, I am currently working within Marshall, Roland, Camp Curtin, and Harrisburg. And so we, last year, we were able to get all the scheduled professional development completed, and we're continuing to add to that this year, and we're helping any teachers that maybe weren't here in the district or hadn't received it last year and are receiving it this year. So, and then in work stream two last year, again, we were only there, I was only there for three months once we got started, so we were able to complete 61 individual coaching sessions as well as 12 group coaching sessions. We call those booster sessions. That's when all the champions, we call them the Champions Committee, that's when all the champions gather monthly. And we kind of break down some of the topics as well as giving them an opportunity to kind of talk about what's working and what's not working within their classrooms. And then finally, we offer consultation, and that I have the opportunity to meet with principals as well, so we can keep everything, you know, collaborative. And then I also have done collaborations with teachers that are not part of the Champions Committee, but were interested in learning more about what we call transition resets, and you can see that on the bottom. This is something that we're working on implementing throughout all of the schools. It's basically an opportunity to embed emotional regulation throughout the day, teaching students the skills of how to reset themselves, how to calm themselves, and how to, you know, just understand what it is they need from class to class, from moment to moment throughout the day, and as well as for teachers. So a couple of the teachers were interested in that, that were not part of the Champions Committee, so I was able to go and introduce that into their classrooms as well. Just a couple of highlights. I want to highlight the third one on the list there. At Marshall, they have taken the Champions Committee and kind of run with it. They, over the summer, met, and I consulted with them about adding a reset period into the class, into their schedule for sixth graders, as a way to bridge the gap between recess and fifth grade. And so they're giving them this reset period. I've had an opportunity to observe it already this year, and it's a great opportunity, again, for the students to just learn these skills and support, learn how to support themselves, and give them that moment to come out of the, you know, very sensory overload of the cafeteria and then restart for their afternoon. And just some things that teachers have been saying. I have to say, you know, there was one teacher that shared that before she had the opportunity to formally introduce resets, she kind of did it by accident because she needed it. She needed a moment to, you know, take a breath and reset herself at the beginning of a period. She just asked her students, I need this, I need this for myself. She modeled this for her students and invited them to join if they wanted to, and she just asked that they be quiet for this, you know, brief moment, and she put up the breathing exercise up on the smartboard. And the next day, she came in and just started teaching, and they all said, whoa, Ms., can we, can we do that breathing thing again? And so it was a really great way for her to see, oh, when they have the opportunity and get a chance, you know, whether they enjoyed the breathing or just enjoyed the quiet, it made an impact. So there have been lots of great moments like that that we've experienced. All right, so I want to turn it back over to Joe.
Hello again. Our last piece is the MTSS Playbook. And the MTSS Playbook is a multi-tiered system of support playbook. When we came to Harrisburg, we thought, you know, how can we reach of support? And we realized that for us, it's a partnership, right? We're working together. So what we wanted to do was to assist after collaboration with leadership. So the purpose of the playbook is to develop a standardized process of procedures to meet students' mental health needs throughout the district. So one of the areas of our concern was how can we make this a universal process? Students, each school was doing something different, right? So it was, if you have 10 schools, you have 10 different processes. We wanted to streamline that, and when I say we, your leadership wanted to streamline that, and they asked us if we could assist in that process. So what is the MTSS Playbook? It's a document where best practices standard and standards are developed along this multi-tiered system of support framework for mental health services. It's a document with clear and concise referral process, and that includes assessments, consents, plan of care, safety plan, discharge forms, and other standardized tools. And it's a living document, so it can be updated. And that is used as a training manual, but also a monitoring tool, and that's important. Quite often, you don't have a monitoring tool. This document provides that. So we are excited to have that document rolled out. So I am going to skip just the last guess. So I meant to go over this first because I thought it was important to mention that this was a brainchild of your leadership here in Harrisburg. All right, so you had 10 committee staff members, these are staff members from the district, that came together. So you had social workers, psychologists, you had ESS, the payroll specialist, you had your assistant superintendent, and you had counselors. And they came together with some of our leadership in ESS and created this MTSS Playbook. So, you know, oftentimes, people talk about dedication and commitment. You see it here from your leadership. And they met, and they worked with a committee, and they wanted to understand what their existing process was and how they could create a process that would serve the entire district under uniform standards. So that is the MTSS Playbook, and that is what, this is what it does. And that concludes our presentation, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions from the folks at Effective School Solutions before
Yes, I have a few questions. I know that you stated in the presentation that you got a breakdown of how many sessions were provided throughout the district, correct? So is there actually another breakdown of how many students are utilizing the services per grade and per school?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Is there a breakdown of how many students are utilizing the services per school and per grade?
Yes, we do have a breakdown of how many students are utilizing the services. So just going back for each, so in each, the majority of the schools, we have a single clinician that's 10 students. So prior to starting the process, we have a process of identifying, working with the school to identify students. So they'll identify students who they think would benefit from the supports that ESS provide, and then we will reach out to those students and their families and begin the process.
Okay. Another thing too is, how many families are actually utilizing the services that's provided, and what does that look like?
I don't have that number in front of me right now, but the number is on. So initially, I had mentioned before, it's a past reason. So initially, we had, when we began the process, like I mentioned, we are new to Harrisburg. So there is some reluctance from families to get involved in the process. Their students are involved, however, those families are not as involved as we would like them to be. So what we are, our wish is to create opportunities to engage families. And we get it, families are working, they're the breadwinners. The times that we offer services may not be ideal, so we need to look at how we can create opportunities, perhaps rescheduling certain appointments, to get those families to engage. And I must say, you know, your superintendent and principals of each school, they're working collaboratively with us to brainstorm and figure out ways in which we can engage families to utilize the services that they need.
And another question, is there a way that we can get feedback from the teachers as to what's working, what's not working, and what needs to be another center of focus?
Yeah, we can do that. And also, part of our process is we have, this pertains to the students, but we have feedback sheets that we send out to the teachers, and they complete those feedback sheets, they send that information back to our clinicians, and we capture that data. But, you know, that's something that we can talk about around the feedback, and perhaps we can amend our documentation to include some questions that may solicit that information.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. My question is, we have a family engagement specialist at each of our 10 schools. What's the relationship? You mentioned that you're having trouble engaging the families. Do you have an ongoing dialogue with the family engagement specialist at each of the schools?
So yes, we are, we are bridging that, or I should say, fostering that relationship with the family engagement specialist to connect with families, so that we can, I guess, improve that process. So that is, we are utilizing them.
Are there any other questions from board members? Let's go.
Yeah, so with the program also, are you, is it also offered to like the community partners outside of the school? Like it did, they presented to the community within the area because we are serving our children right here within the district, so is there something, is there any engagement that is done outside of the school?
We are going to be doing parent workshops this year. We'll be offering them both in English and in Spanish, so we're in the process of planning the dates for those. We'll have, I believe, four for mark, like I'm looking to do one for marking period, so it'll be on topics that are similar to what we're also providing to the teachers, so that parents are, you know, on the same wavelength and understand what it is that the teachers are learning as well, and getting the same similar information.
I also wanted to say that our clinicians, and Joe does a great job in coaching them, we do a lot of outreach to community providers that are already involved in the lives of the students in the school, so we are collaborating with them regularly throughout the month, so that we can be on the same page of how are we interacting with the child, those kinds of things. It's the expectation of us that we have that routine communication and collaboration because we want to be a team and working to support the child, so it is important to have that.
One more question.
Go ahead.
It occurs to me that I think what we have seen here historically, you're at four schools in particular with this group of 10.
We were at four schools.
All 10 now?
Is the census all at 10? Is that your question?
Yeah, I'm asking about the intensive 10. Is that at four particular schools, or have you expanded that to all 10 schools?
We've expanded that to all 10.
Right. Are you finding that when you have an issue with a child in the district, are there siblings involved? That you see that you have a child in one grade level, and then you, there's a echo effect in other family members in other grade levels? Have you seen any correlation like that?
I can't say we've experienced that at ESS. However, we have heard feedback or received feedback that teachers or, I would say, power professionals have experienced some issues where conflict arrives because of siblings, and they're supporting each other, but the support is not in the most appropriate way, which then involves into an escalation of incidences. But that has not been our experience with ESS and the students that we serve.
I just want to say thank you to our colleagues in Effective School Solutions for a great presentation, and we appreciate the collaboration and the partnership. So thank you very much. That concludes our presentations for this evening. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comment this evening? Thank you, Dr. Zesky. We have two public comments this evening. The first one is from Ms. Cordell Athel. Her address is 1009 Cumberland Street, located in Harrisburg. Her agenda item is call to order. She would like to address the board and the receiver. And just a reminder, you are limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't know where else to put up on the agenda, because I'm really here to say thank you to each of you for running for office, for succeeding in the competition, and becoming a member of this board. I thank you because I see on the news that across this country, there's a lot of bitching about age-appropriate curriculum, about book censorship. All, it seems to be derived from the assumption that boards have been sleeping all along and not paying attention to what choices are made for young people who do serve as our students. And I thank you for the hours that you put in paying attention to each of the important issues that come before you. I further recognize that you do this in face of limited funding in proportion to the need of the students that you serve. And so, again, I thank you.
Thank you. We next have Pastor Earl Harris, who resides at 1003 South 21st Street, and his agenda item is disparity study. I'm sorry? Okay, they will hold. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on then to unfinished business items for receiver approval, we will begin with
Moving on then to unfinished business items for receiver approval, we will begin with the Office of Human Resources. And these are our consent agenda items that were properly vetted at the September 13th Committee of the whole meeting. So Items A through L listed on the agenda are so approved at this time. Moving on to Office of Business Services. Again, these items listed on the agenda are part now of a consent approval. So I do approve Items A through J as listed on the agenda that were properly vetted on September 13th. Office of Academics, also consent agenda, Items A through F are approved as presented on the agenda. And lastly, under Office of Operations, the consent agenda approval for Items A and B are so approved. So having moved then to the new business items, I will turn it back over to Ms. Zula for the Office of Human Resources. And these are new items presented for the boards in my consideration that were not seen at the September 13th meeting. Ms. Zula?
Good evening. Under Item A, we have a request to approve job descriptions, first for a full-time position of the Coordinator of College and Career, and then several club advisor positions, which are supplementals that are offered to our HEA teaching staff. Under B, we have a request to create three positions that are noted there on the agenda. C, we have the retirement request for approval for James Wallace. We have under Item D, resignations or end of service for staff who have submitted their notifications and resignation. E, we have requests to hire and employ new staff members. And F, a change of employment status for existing staff members requesting to change to new positions within the district. Under G, we have requests for approval for column movement for our existing HEA staff who've completed additional credits to move horizontally on the salary schedule. Under H, we have supplemental or stipend requests for staff members. Under I, we have requests to approve site administrators and teachers for our K-12 after-school programming that will be conducted at all levels throughout the district in all buildings. So there's quite an extensive list of staff members there for approval. Under J, we have requests to approve substitute staff. These are existing full-time staff members who are requesting to serve as substitute custodians within our operations department as needed. And then in addition, there is, we are requesting special authorization from the receiver to add an additional action item, which is on the updated agenda under Letter K, for your consideration and approval. This action item was not able to be listed on the agenda prior to the meeting due to the pre-employment process still being completed, specifically this finalization of reference checks. Those reference checks have now been completed for this candidate for employment, and I'm requesting that this additional action item be added to the agenda due to the emergent need to fill this position.
Thank you, Ms. Zula. I'm going to start with this one and then work my way backwards. So the Sunshine Act amendments of 2021 require that any additions to the agenda be approved by a majority vote of the board, and since the receiver has the vote of the board, I am formally approving the addition of Letter K, and subsequently approving the employment of Mr. Wendell Morris as the Director of School Police and Safe Schools at the salary prorated listed on the agenda. The reason we support moving this item tonight is because we know there is an emergent need to have somebody in this capacity in our schools as soon as possible. So I do approve of the addition and approve of the employment of Mr. Morris. Working backwards, under the approval of job descriptions, since these were not vetted by the board, if there are any questions on Letters A and B, I would ask the board to ask them now before I grant approval.
Okay, so for action item number A at the top, for the Coordinator of College and Career, would that focus on our students applying for college and other things that I mentioned? Is that what that position, Assistant?
I can answer. Looking at helping and supporting all high school students, college applications, going through the process, potential college visits, and being able to support our students, all of them, who go on to have post-secondary success. But also, the other part of that too would be looking at internships, and how those who, you know, maybe are not going to college, but also the work experience based with that as well. So it's really focused on the post-secondary support that our high school students need in terms of making sure they have a plan after they exit John Harris Tech or Cougar Academy.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Williams?
Thank you. This is just for clarity's sake. For B, it says creation and elimination of, we're creating a lot of those positions, correct?
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
For B, I know that it stated it's creation slash elimination of positions, and I'm, well, we're, okay, I'm just making sure that I'm understanding it correctly. We're creating a lot of those positions.
Yeah, we're just creating the whole of those three. We're requesting to create those three positions. There's no additional elimination of positions that are being requested right now.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarity, Ms. Zula, we do have an assistant principal in place at Ben Franklin, so this is an additional assistant principal at Ben Franklin?
Yes, due to the substantial increase in enrollment at Ben Franklin and the needs of the building, there is, has been a request to add an assistant principal position there to support the administration.
I assume this is an unbudgeted position since it's being requested now, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams.
And actually, let me think of something. In terms of the autism coach, which I feel is necessary, do we already have any currently?
Yes, we have one autism coach currently at Ben Franklin, and we're requesting to add an additional autism coach position at Hous.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to ask, with the position of the Coordinator of College and Career at our regularness, I'll be able to give a follow-up by November before Thanksgiving break, and also have another follow-up once we're in there this week?
When you say follow-up, what do you mean?
So to see how many students are actually applying for college and how many kids are utilizing the service.
Sure, I mean, we're going to put the position out, hopefully get an individual into the role. I hope also, as it is approved, I believe it was in August, for John Harris and the start, university start program, some of that work is going to already be started, and I'll be working on that as well.
Hearing no other questions, I will approve the job descriptions under A, and the creation of the positions under B, the retirement under C, the resignations under D, the employment of new staff under E, the change of employment status under F, the column movements under G, the supplemental stipends under H, the programming individuals for after-school for Letter I, as listed on the agenda, that long list of teachers, the substitute staff for Letter J. So that now covers the Office of Human Resources. Moving on to the Office of Business Services, Dr. Stokes.
Thank you, Dr. Susske. The first item is the approval of grants. Each year, we are a subrecipient through pass-through funds from the capital area, an immediate unit for our IDPA grants, and the amounts are listed for this year for our school age and our early childhood grants for those. The second item on the agenda is a approval of an addendum to the engagement letter that was approved this past spring with Boyer and Ritter. And we want to prioritize the addressing of processes and systems related to payroll and benefits. We have a ratification of our fundraiser, and then we have a tax settlement that is being recommended by our solicitor.
Do any board members have questions on any of the items? Mr. Williams?
Pertaining to the grants, I know that the school district applied for 21st Century Funding, and we were, not we were denied. Did we, I'm trying to find the right word, did we ask why, or did we attempt to, you know, okay, maybe that's a question we're backwards, we could have done that.
So we did follow through with the request to know why. We didn't get the, it's a very detailed reason. The way I understand it, there are three committees that assess the application. One committee scored our plan high, while two scored it quite low. So my take is that the plan did not match the intended, I guess, premise of the grant itself. We went with a targeted intervention plan for third and fourth grade. One committee really liked it, two committees didn't, so I can't get it. Sorry? No, I appreciate that, but yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions on the business items? Hearing none, I approve of the grant award as listed on the agenda, the addendum for Boyer and Ritter, the ratification of the fundraiser, and the stipulations for 7th and 1st Mallberry. They're all approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Susske.
You're welcome, Dr. Stokes. Moving on to the Office of Academics, Dr. Snead.
Good evening, everyone. I only have a few items under academics. Under Educational Services, we are presenting an interpretation, an agreement between an interpretation company called Linguers to provide translation services for our schools. Under D, students, is this, we talked about this on the first, at the Cal meeting, the request is to approve the contract between Harrisburg School District and the Vista Schools to approve our 40% cost share for the student that is attending that school. So that is a change from September, I'm going to say the wrong date, 10th date. So this should reflect that change.
September 13th.
September 13th, I apologize. And then, under Professional Development, request approval to send Mr. Turman, Dr. Stokes, Ms. Slaughter, and Ms. Felton to the National Career Academy Coalition Conference of 2022 from November 14th to November 16th. This is in support of the plan to include pathways in our middle schools, so that team is going to learn how to implement that for next year.
Any questions?
Actually, yes, I have another question.
Go ahead.
As far as Letter B, the Educational Services, it just says that there's a contract between Linguers and the school district, just providing translators. Is it translators for every building, or is it just admin services?
Yeah, it's, so we currently use a system called Interpretalk. Linguers is a new company that provides all of the languages that are represented in Harrisburg for all of our buildings. And it's done through video conferencing and telephone conferencing. So we will be receiving, once this is approved, we will be receiving professional development to make sure that all of our offices, all of the people, special ed, everybody who has meetings with our families that come from, you know, that have different languages other than English have access to this.
And another thing, it doesn't have a cost?
So the cost is a per minute, it's a per minute, depending on whether it's video or phone. And that's very similar to Interpretalk.
Is it possible for, to, I guess, for the phone conferences or video conferences with the cost per minute, or does that vary?
Sure, I didn't, I didn't, we can provide that, absolutely. The reason why we've made this change to Linguers from Interpretalk is because we felt that we would spend less money on this service, and that it would be equivalent or better than the services that we had before. The actual cost sheet is not added to the agenda, so I'll make sure you see it. I'll pass it to Dr. Susske so that all of you can have it.
Now, one last question, is this, this is for lack of a better, not 24/7, but on call?
Twenty, yeah, it is 24/7.
On call, okay.
It does take, I will say that when we have meetings in other languages other than English, it takes more time to do that process. We just plan for more time. So I, key meetings that normally take 45 minutes might take an hour and a half because we're going back and forth, and we want to make sure our families fully understand what the school district is proposing.
And what I mean is, say if you have a parent that's coming up to the school, or a parent going up to student services, are they able right then, they say, you know what, just last weekend I met a woman who spoke Nepali, and I had to go through a translator on my phone to do that, so is it possible, if they're going up to student services and they know, hey, you know, we don't have anyone here, I can immediately get on a call or a video call?
The service is supposed to, according to the contract, the service is supposed to provide at point of need access to interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the academic items? Let's go, one.
So in regards to the education services, what was the difference from the prior service that we are now?
I, you know what, I don't want to misspeak, and I don't remember. I know that we had a plan up to a certain amount of money. Interpretation, we have in the budget for up to $50,000 a school year. This is a service that we must provide for our families. We felt that Interpretalk was up to $50,000, and this is up to $50,000. We believe that with our calculations, it will be less than $50,000 with this service. We think it's going to be slightly lower than the services that we've been using before, and that's why we went with the contract.
And will it, does it provide more language?
It actually, I can't say that it provides more. We believe that based on what we've learned about it, that it'll provide quicker access to some of our less, like, I don't know what to call it, less, that some of our fewer parents that use, like, I don't know, the languages that are used less than English and Spanish. We thought we would get better access. Sometimes with Interpretalk, you have to wait longer for Nepali or Mandarin, or we believe that we'll have quicker access with this company.
And they also, do they provide, like, for families who may have blind, like, people that are maybe dead or that need to sign language?
Sign language is a little bit different. We do get sign, American Sign Language, when we have family. It doesn't provide it through this service, no. No, we would have to get an interpreter from the Association of Deaf and Harder hearing, which we do.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep.
All right, hearing no other questions, I approve of Letter B, D, and F as reflected on the academics agenda. Moving on to the Office of Operations, Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Dr. Susske. Good evening, everybody. Under the area of facilities, recommending the approval of a proposal with Low Bar Associates and that's to Assistant District with Snow Memorial, and John Harris Campervan and Cougar Academy. Under the area of food service, recommending the approval of contract with Carol H. Gilberg Consulting. This contract will assist the district with development of an RFP, which is required by PDE every five years for a food service.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the board?
Have we used their services before?
Carol Gilbert, yes, we have used them, not necessarily in this capacity, but to assist the food service with consulting in the meals information into the system.
So if Dr. Soski chose to approve them, is it, or are we able to give them a follow-up? How, I, what type of work that was provided and how good the work was or for the service?
You mean?
Like a follow-up, right?
Sure, it turns out, follow-up for, and you're talking, Carol Gilbert, you're not talking the snow removal.
It's not the snow removal. We make it together.
Oh, okay. Sorry. We have used Lowbar in the past for snow removal and we can certainly give you follow-up in terms of their performance. They've performed well for us in the past, so that's why we are recommending them again at this point.
What are some things that stood out to you guys that you would go back to?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Glass for that.
I have a good question.
What are some services that they provided that stood out that you would go back to this contract? What are some services that they provided?
So they, so they take care of all of our major parking lots at John Harris and because it is our largest area and Campert and the Lincoln Administrative Building. They do have provided salt services. We do have salt trucks that we get salt from the city. They do get the heavily impacted areas for the support. We've been short handed for the last couple of years, so the supplement has been a great, it's been a huge help. And we do, I'm happy to say, we have a new ground guy this week, so that's really good. However, I don't think he's going to hit the ground running and be able to plow snow like we need to in his first year, but by next year, we should, we should be good.
Thank you, Dr. Glass. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do have one question. I'm sorry about that. Mr. Thompson, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
I, I don't suppose that you know, but I would ask that when we present consulting services like this, although it seems obvious that Carol H. Gilbert Consulting is likely a certified WBE or possibly a certified WBE that's very opaque whether Lowbar is a certified MBE or WBE. And I have been advocating that we, even if we don't select an MBE or WBE in the role, that we be conscious of whether they are. And so I'm not asking whether these two are. It should be obvious from their submission whether they are or not. So I'm just asking if we can figure out how to get this into our reporting for spending money. It's for a vendor. Is it certified yet or not?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And I will work with Mr. Turman to make sure that the team is aware of those requirements moving forward. Thank you. Ms. Robinson?
Hey, Mr. Thompson, now that I'm on the same page or using the same phrase, so I was going to ask the same question and, but my additional question is, are they local? That is, is this a local, this is the Lowbar Associates? In addition to being either an MBE, WBE, or PDE, are they all local? Okay.
Mr. Williams?
A question pertaining to the food services piece. So for the, so I see the word contracting this entity to craft the RFP. And this is purely against my part here. When it comes to crafting the RFP for food services like this, is the nutritional value of what's being provided for the young people in the school district part of the RFP? Or like, what does that process look like? And maybe that's not the question we asked at this moment, but I hope that some of that's considered in the crafting of the RFP.
Nutritional is included and there are really a lot of areas in terms of meal calculations, accounts are involved with the PDE forms. Very detailed process.
Thank you.
I don't think that can, could this possibly be added to this consulting? I work with a lot of those students in the district and a lot of the complaints that they've had as far as the meals, it's proportion and the nutrition. They're not, and you know, it's where teenagers are actually asking for vegetables and, you know, and more fruits and things like that. But the biggest complaint that I heard is portion size. So can that be somehow put into the thought process in this consulting with the food services? Just something, just something to consider with that.
I'm happy to answer that for you, Ms. Robinson. So portions are determined by the federal government. We really do not have any say when it comes to the portion size and we serve students. So we actually have to do a 30-day menu as part of this RFP process that spells out how many ounces of chicken, how many ounces of burgers, how many ounces of grain. We have to have different colored vegetables, the serving size for those. So unfortunately, we don't have much say as a school district on that portion size. However, we always encourage students, you can have many, many vegetables and fruits. You're not limited to just one or two, so feel free to fill up your plate on those. But when it comes to the main entree, we are quite limited on the portion size for those.
I think not so much the, just the vegetables themselves. I think the variety is what the students are asking. I'm not, I can ask about what are exotic, what fruits and vegetables they're asking for, but I just thought it was really interesting that there are students and teenagers who are actually asking for more vegetables, things like that.
And that is great because we solicit feedback from students as part of this process. It's required for our food service management company to have different means of getting student feedback and also to be participating in our wellness committee. So it's great feedback that we can at least provide to SFB this current year, but it is part of the RFP for them to solicit that student feedback and participate in our wellness committee meetings.
And I'm sorry, one more thing. And then one just, it just came to mind. It actually came up on my, my Facebook feed from four years ago. We, we actually did a grab and go breakfast. Are we, is there something that we, I know it probably stopped before during COVID, but it was actually on the, ABC 27 actually did a news story on it where students who may have, they may not be at the time for a breakfast, but it was a grab and go little kiosk where it's, it may be some fruit or vegetables or a yogurt or a milk. I can actually, I can show you the video that they did on it, but I think that's something that could be considered in this possibly, it's just something different for the students. Just even if we're talking, they're complaining about portions, it could just be a grab and go. Maybe just one of these foods or, you know, a little yogurt or something. So I'll, I'll send you the link to that video.
That would be great because we are starting all of our items at all of our buildings so that students do have selection of those when they are, you know, beyond the meal period. In addition, we work with our principals so that we design meal programs that are going to work with their schedules. So especially at the secondary level, something like a last, a second chance breakfast might be something to consider. Ms. Felton?
So my question is to the facility proposal. Who is the, who are, because they're all servicing the three locations? We all, are we currently, who is, who's currently going in for the other locations?
Our grounds guys do that. We have our own plows, we have our own salt trucks, we have our own in-house machines. So it's generally taken care of by our grounds guys. And like I explained earlier, over the last couple of years of COVID, we've lost two guys and we have not been able to get anybody in. So we're, we're hoping to build that back up to where we're fully self-sufficient again because we have all the tools we need. We just don't have the guys to use the tools. So we need to get some extra support because, let me tell you, when they're ready to open up school, we got till 10 o'clock to make sure doors are open, so we got to make sure everything's clear.
Okay. And I was only questioning that because of the funding part of it. Is it going to be, do we see an increase or decrease?
Well, adding, there was a slight increase in their cost. I'm sure that was across the board, everybody. But I can tell you, last year, we didn't use a lot. So we were, we were good the year before. We had more snow, we needed more help. So I guess it really depends on weather nature. See how much snow we get done hopefully. And we'll have mild one this year and that'll be great for the district, but you never know, you're going to have those days where it's going to come or it's going to come at the most inopportune times where it's on the weekend or Sunday or you got it just right. There's a lot of fog goes into moving snow here, making it safer.
And I mean, I make sense because we lost, as you just stated, we lost two. So adding, we have what they said, so then we're using our own service. So that's a, thank you. Thanks.
Hearing no further questions, I do approve of the proposal with Lowbar for supplementing our workforce for snow removal and also for the food service contract RFP with Carol H. Gilbert Consulting as listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Soski.
You're welcome. Moving on to policy updates. And there is a note on the agenda that the district team continues to research various components of the proposed disparity study and will be providing an update to the board at the October 11th committee of the whole meeting. I believe, I don't know if our public comment was associated with that. I want to give the opportunity if it was. Pastor Earl, is this when you wanted to give your public comment?
Yes, may I say?
Yes, sir.
Please tell us where we are in the process.
Where we are in the process. Mr. Thompson, would you like to speak on behalf of the committee? If not, I'll provide it. We've updated, it's up to you.
I'm happy to do that. We have met several times. The focus of the committee has been Dr. Soski, Dr. Travis Waters, our new chief recovery officer, Chris Selmer, and me. And we've met several times. We've reviewed documents from sample disparity studies done for both school districts and for municipal entities. We've reviewed articles that talk about the law implications, legal implications from the Richmond case and beyond. And perhaps, Dr. Soski, you could give a little summary from what it is that Mr. Saltanic did for us.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. In our executive session tonight, the board received legal information and insight into more details of the City versus Richmond, or City of Richmond versus Croson case so that they have a full understanding of the implications of the case and also some other legalities in engaging in the disparity study. So I think the board is fully aware now of what they need to know from a legal perspective. Also, I do have a phone conversation scheduled with E-Consult to begin some discussions about the study and to look at the potential cost of the study. So we are moving forward in a positive direction. It's just that we need a little bit more time and by our next meeting, we hope to have a more comprehensive update for you. Moving on to our board committee representative reports. Ms. Johnson is not here for the IU update, so let's move on to Ms. Robinson and Mr. Williams for Dolphin County Technical School JSC.
Okay, on, at our last JSC meeting for Dolphin County Tech, we actually just went over a lot of the personnel items, welcomed the new principal, new teachers, and did a couple of, I'm sorry, the, I pulled over my notes here. The, there was some discussion about the current ASME negotiations and their contracts. One of the teachers, Mr. Brightville, actually took some students to Wyoming for a construction project and we discussed how that trip went. And I'm going to find out the, the only people on this construction project were four young women. And they went there, they built everything. They had an absolute wall. So my request to them was to have these students come there and tell us about their experience. They did put some pictures up, but I would rather hear from the students of what their experience was there and possibly to set something up for the following year to make sure that these students get that experience. And there was actually a request from Mr. Rawls, who's a board member of the Sussex County Township where he sits as the chair for JSC for a study on the disciplinary processes at Dolphin County Tech. We've had some meetings where we weren't really sure how fair the discipline was being dealt out. And we just want to make sure that the study that Mr. Rawls asked for, which I seconded, was to have a disciplinary study break down by school, grade, race, offense, and the consequence. We had some pushback from some other school districts, but Dr. Flue, who's the director there, well, she said she will have that for us within the next month or so, possibly by the next meeting. We just want to ensure that our students are treated fairly. And there are some complaints from parents that they don't feel that their students were treated fairly. I don't know if that is the truth, if there is some disparity in the discipline with different schools or school districts, but we want, just wanted to have a breakdown of, you know, just the school, the grade, the race, the offense, and the consequence to just make sure everything was pretty much fair across the board. We don't want someone from Central Dolphin committing an exact same offense as a student here in Harrisburg, but it could be based on race. It could be based on anything that they're getting two different disciplines for that offense. So we just wanted to get a breakdown and make sure that our students aren't being treated fairly because we fought very hard to become a part of that consortium and we are now active members of that group. And we got pushed back when we tried to join and we want to make sure that our students aren't being punished or unfairly disciplined because of other school districts not wanting us there. So that report, as soon as I receive that from Dr. Flue, I'll present it to the rest of the board and our administration. So, and other than that, that's pretty much our report for Dolphin County Technical School.
All right, Mr. Thompson, PSBA.
Thank you. I'm going to yield in a minute here to Ms. Robinson, who's been doing some PSBA committee work. But a couple of highlights. Distributed a summary report to the board today that has the dates of our next monthly exchange, phone calls for the board leadership exchange, or the old directors' monthly exchange. And there is a specific monthly exchange for new school directors. And of course, we have several board directors that are in their first term. What I do want to emphasize is that the PSBA, the School Boards Association, we know now that they withdrew from the National School Boards Association about a year ago now. They have become a founding member. PSBA is a founding member of the Consortium of State School Boards Associations. Oh, SSBA, caused by. And I, again, on the report that I distributed today, there's a link to their website. In that it's a new thing, it's very formative in nature. So there's a little bit of information on the website. They are endeavoring to put together the kind of programming, professional development, and statewide national conference kind of opportunities that NSBA offered. So stay tuned on that. And lastly is the PASA, PSBA School Leadership Conference is at the end of October and the first week of November. And any board members interested, we have not requested, I don't know that anyone is particularly interested. is particularly interested. Would the receiver entertain, uh, a, uh, budget item to, uh, have board representatives attend either the PSBA or, um, perhaps more importantly is the NSBA National Conference is in Washington DC and they do allow non-members to come and participate in the, uh, Washington DC conference, even though we're longer members of NSBA. The advocacy conference gave us, uh, access to our federal congressperson and our, uh, US senators. And, um, that is another area, uh, I think there's some time for you to think that through. Uh, I think we have some budget numbers that we could share with you if you would entertain one or two representatives at that DC conference. I believe it's in February and it's in person.
Yes, I would, I would certainly entertain that.
And, uh, Ms. Robinson, uh, congratulations to you. You have been appointed to one of the, uh, PSBA, uh, committees and, uh, do you have a report from your first meeting?
Yes, I do, and thank you because actually what you said kind of goes into what, um, we've been doing. Um, I was appointed to what's called the platform committee. Now, a few months ago, uh, surveys were sent out to school districts across the state and they outlined what they believed were the most important issues for their school district. That then comes to the platform committee where on September 17th, we sat and went through all of the, um, kind of prioritized what each district wanted and then we kind of condensed that, um, changed up the wording, um, just made it more concise before it's, they're presented to the delegate assembly, which they adopt. Now, what the, the priorities that we, we were doing, that, I'm sorry, that we were deciding on before the 2324 priorities. Mr. Thompson had actually mentioned that on the, the national level, the NSBA, the advocacy day, which he and I have gone to many years, I think Mr., um, Carter has gone once or twice, I think two years or so. So we've been down there on that national level, speaking with the legislators, going on the Hill, um, advocating for, um, our students in our respective districts. On that level, they're actually, it's national, so it's different states coming in. What we're doing here is actually just for Pennsylvania, but it's actually been decided on for our PA advocacy day and also for the, on the national level. So we sit for many hours, many, um, arguments trying to, but everything was a priority and when everything's a priority, you, you really want to fight for it. So we actually got a lot of things out. I was actually notified today that the, um, the list was finalized and in October it's gonna be sent to the delegate assembly to be adopted. So these are gonna be things that are actually, each school district, once we have our advocacy days are gonna be, um, these are things I'm gonna push to our legislators. It's, um, our funding and who Mr. Thompson mentioned about, even though PSBA is not a part of, um, NSBA anymore, one of the things that we were looking to adopt is to have some, even when we're not a part of it, to have a partnership with NSBA in order for us to still participate in that advocacy day nationally in DC. Um, it was many long hours, um, so I think it was, it was about 15 of us chosen from across the state to actually break these things down. It was a tough day, it was, um, but so worth it when you realize there's so many people that are actually so excited about advocating for their district and for our students. So, um, that has been sent, again, like I said, I was just notified today, everything was certified and to be sent to the delegate assembly for adoption. And our next go-round will be for our advocacy day, Pennsylvania and on our national level. So it was a wonderful experience and it was an honor to be, uh, chosen for that. So that is my report for PSBA. So thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Robinson, on your selection to that committee and you're represented in the Harrisburg School District. Thank you. At 141 Advisory Committee, Mr. Thompson, leader?
Uh, yes. Um, we began, um, meeting again and this first meeting for the school year of the advisory council started right in on the nuts and bolts of, um, identifying and planning an exit framework for the district out of receivership. In doing so, we would first need to identify what the performance metrics are. We do have a recovery document. Does that to some degree, but how are they reported? How is that data captured and shared? And how do we make sure that these changes are institutionalized to the effect that they envy? Um, the first discussion in the bulk of our meeting was about in classroom diagnostic tools and assessments and what are the actual goals and making sure that the work that our teachers do and our administrators do is all working towards in that same goal, that they have the tools necessary to do that. So that conversation started and I'm sure has led to some conversations in the district beyond our advisory council, but I'm very happy to see us get down to functional work. Thank you.
Anything to add, Mr. Thompson? Okay, and lastly, I have on the agenda the LERTA advisory board. Uh, it is my understanding that we are waiting for an appointment of someone on this board by the city of Harrisburg. Has anyone heard anything? I did submit the names of those who were interested. Anyone hear anything official? Okay, so we'll wait on that. Superintendent's report, Mr. Truman.
Thank you, Dr. Suski. Just a few things for the superintendent's report. Uh, last month was the first day of school. Uh, so you're gonna see a lot of back-to-school photos, uh, from the first day. I'm gonna give a big shout out to all the administrative staff and teaching staff and also to my cabinet as well. Uh, all of my cabinet members, uh, were all stationed at a building for the first day of school, uh, just to make sure we had a good transition, uh, back to school. So very happy for the first day of school in terms of how everything went. Uh, so there are some, definitely some photos there for you in terms of how that first day of school went for our students and also for our staff. Some event that's coming up, uh, we're gonna celebrate homecoming will be Saturday, October 8th at the John Harris Campus. Uh, please join us for the All You Can Eat Charity Pancake Breakfast. It will be sponsored by the Rugby Club of Harrisburg. That will be from 8 to 12. Ticket price is $6 for adults, $4 for students, and $3 for kids. And after that, we will have the Homecoming Parade, which will start at 10 o'clock. The Fall Fest, Fall Family Fest will be from 10:30 to 12. The football game will be at 1 o'clock and then for our students, the Homecoming Dance will be that evening from 7 to 11. So if you really want to come out and support all the students, uh, homecomings looks to be a great event for the school year. I'm looking forward to riding in the fire truck. Don't know where I'll be stationed yet, um, hopefully inside the truck, uh, but you know, we had some discussion on that last week. Uh, I was a little concerned where I was gonna be positioned. So, uh, that will be, uh, next Saturday. Also, a generous donation. The Delta Sigma, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority was very generous and offered to donate a few dozen books to the Scott elementary library. Um, there were dozens of titles that would feature, uh, real people, fictional characters who were black, Hispanic, Asian American, or Native American. Um, it was very research and perhaps, um, something definitely for children of color that need to see themselves in the books that they read. So I definitely want to thank, uh, the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority for their generous donation. And lastly, and then there will be one more thing for Mrs. Keys who will do for us before we, uh, try to turn back over to Dr. Suski. Um, this month is National Hispanic Characters Month, started on September 15th, goes all the way up to October 15th. So the Harrisburg School District is proud to announce National Hispanic Characters Month. The theme for 2022 is Midos, the inclusivity for a stronger nation. The theme will encourage us as a nation to ensure that our voices are represented and welcome to help us build stronger communities and a stronger nation, nation. So very big thank you to Mrs. Keys, uh, and also to Mr. Alvaras for all they do in highlighting what goes on in buildings for Nat, for National Hispanic, National Hispanic Character Month. Uh, they are sending out, uh, different types of things on Facebook. I see them come out, uh, some, some of the things that are happening in the school. So a very good thank, very big thank you to both of them. Mrs. Keys, we have one video to share this evening at the homecoming, correct? Okay.
We want to invite you to our coveted homecoming celebration. Come on out and celebrate with the Harrisburg School District. Harrisburg highs mighty gooders, the Harrisburg Rugby Club, and our community as we celebrate the Fall Family Festival with our federal programs department. In addition, our annual All You Can Eat Pancake Breakfast with our good friends at the Rugby Club of Harrisburg. The pancake breakfast will commence from 8 a.m. to 12 p.m. right here at John Harris Campus on Saturday, October 8th. You also want to hang around for the homecoming parade, which will commence across Walnut Street to 17th Street and up Market Street to John Harris Campus. Will continue with a very special Mighty Gooders football game that you can do not one minute and will run live with a special homecoming dance for Harrisburg high school students. That's it for now. We look forward to seeing you on Saturday, October 8th at 2022 Homecoming Celebration. Go Mighty Gooders!
All right, Dr. Suski, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Well done, Ms. Keys. I always love your videos. Thank you. And Sean, where we take this, the team, the team effort, but we always love your videos. Yes, love the enthusiasm. And now for roundtable, I'm going to begin to my far left, Mr. Thompson, anything for the good of the order before we adjourn?
Uh, no, nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
No, man, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
No, uh, pretty much I'll just look forward to the follow-ups.
Mr. Williams?
Um, yeah, I just want to thank everyone for being here. You all stuck it out. Uh, the woman in the back for the kind words earlier, appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson, leader?
Uh, nothing really to add, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Actually, it's just my clip, actually, um, this way it was took what I was going to say. Um, yeah, thank you so much for your kind words. We really don't get a lot of, uh, appreciation sometimes, so it's actually really wonderful and hard wanting to, to hear something kind towards us. So thank you so much, really do appreciate it.
And Ms. Copeland?
Yes, um, thank you. I always say it's so important for our community to be at these, you know, be at our support meetings. So we appreciate you and thank you for coming out to share. This is all, we can always hear, you know, the bad, right? The good, but we appreciate you taking the time to, you know, get your comments. And I think it's so important, we have a lot of controversy about things that don't happen, but these things don't happen a lot because a lot of people do not show up. So I just thank you for taking the time to, uh, come out and share that comment, we are appreciative. And I could not, also, uh, the two presentations I noticed not to leave out, but I would like to thank our former student Tracy Jennings and, uh, Dr. Sharie Limmsting, and also a paper with the, um, effective school solution for just coming out to do a presentation. So we appreciate it. I know you've been here so long, but I ain't got to leave out, but I definitely want to. Thank you, Bill, and, um, our team. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Truman, I believe you do have a comment?
Uh, just one, Dr. Suski. Uh, we formally approve moving forward this evening with still elementary school. So I know that is something that has been dear and dear to all of us, uh, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and I do appreciate Dr. Suski in terms of improving that and moving that forward. So we have formally moved forward with, uh, bringing still elementary school back online.
Thank you. And at this time, the school board and receiver will recess into executive session upon adjournment of the meeting to continue discussion of personnel matters. The meeting is adjourned.